Good evening and welcome. I call to order the August 23rd, 2021 City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting.
Okay.
Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
All right. Good evening and welcome. I call to-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Which is standing. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everyone. So the next item is changes to the order of the agenda, and I'd like to propose some changes to our order of discussion this evening. I recommend that we move new business items 10A and 10B to follow item seven, and move item eight to before 11. So the new order would be items one through seven, item 10A and B, 9A and B, 8A, and then 11. Are there any, any support for this proposal?
I'm good with that. I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right. And Vice Mayor, I'll ask, list your help to keep me, keep me in order. I made, made a few changes there. So one through seven. Sorry, you got it, Jeff?
Yes, I do. In addition to, in addition to those changes, item 7K on the consent calendar also needs to be pulled out of the initial motion. Councilmember Rack had informed me that he needs to recuse himself on that issue because of proximity to his home. And we can still take it as a consent calendar item. We just will need to have two separate consent calendar motions. So he has the opportunity to leave the room for that particular one.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. We'll make sure to do so. All right. Greg, are there any reports from closed session this evening?
No report from closed session.
Okay. Item five, Council Communications and Announcements. These are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Do any council members have any items that they wish to discuss? All right. I see Councilmember Collins, followed by Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a couple of meetings last week for the Silicon Valley Clean Water Board, and at one of the meetings, at my request, we were given a very compelling presentation on water recycling. This is a topic that is becoming increasingly newsworthy as our drought gets worse and worse. And the Silicon Valley Clean Water does have a plan that's progressing that could eventually produce up to 6 million gallons of water per day of clean water that could be put back into the hatchet system. The very next day, we also had a tour of the new treatment facility out on Radio Road, which is way out on Redwood Shores. And we had a visit by Michael Reagan, or Michael Regan, who is the EPA Administrator that was appointed by President Biden last March. And he was announcing these water infrastructure loans that we have qualified for. And he also emphasized the importance of, of clean water and the abundance of water and how it's obviously a public safety issue. So there was a little bit of news around it. I don't know if anybody saw it, but it was, it was good to meet someone from the federal government that, that knows that, that how important, how important an issue clean water is. So that's my report.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, number one, congratulate our staff on a successful launch of the farmer's market back on Laurel Street. I've had the chance to go down there, and it's been very well attended. And I've heard a lot of great feedback, so I wanted to thank our staff for all of that good work. And I also wanted to let my colleagues and staff know that I had the pleasure of giving a San Carlos city coin to Linda Townsend, longtime city resident and beloved Arrendal school librarian, specifically for her efforts to open her own library since the very early days of the pandemic from her front porch. And it has just been a wonderful asset to our community. People of all ages have enjoyed going to her porch and finding books to read during the pandemic. And it was really important to me to recognize Linda's great service to our community. So thank you, Linda, if you're watching, and I know that everyone in our community appreciates your service, too. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. I don't see any further hands up, so we'll move on to the next item, which is public comment. So for persons wishing to address City Council on matters not on the agenda, may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The City's Council's general policies refer staff for attention on the matter or have it placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and public formal discussion and input at that time. Crystal, are there any members, members of the public who wish to make a public comment?
I am, oh, there it goes. Wait a second. I do see two hands. There it is. Okay, first up is Kay Goforth. We should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, this, my name is Kathleen Goforth. I'm a resident of San Carlos and a volunteer with the Fossil Free Buildings Silicon Valley Campaign. And I would like to tell you about a program that we've developed to help local residents reduce their greenhouse gas emissions by eliminating the use of natural gas in their homes. As you know, natural gas is a fossil fuel, and its use is a major contributor to the climate crisis. There are four sectors in which we need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions: the electricity supply, buildings, transportation, and industrial sectors. Excuse me. San Carlos has already tackled the electricity supply sector by being part of Peninsula Clean Energy, which provides greenhouse gas-free electricity from primarily renewable sources. Now, we need to use that clean renewable electricity to replace fossil fuels in the other three sectors, and we need to do it in an equitable way. Earlier this year, the City Council took an excellent first step by adopting a reach code that requires new and reconstructed buildings to be all-electric. And that was important, but to actually reduce greenhouse gas emissions, we need to stop using natural gas in our existing buildings. So to assist residents in doing this, Fossil Free Buildings Silicon Valley has started a volunteer electric home ambassador program. And through this program, local residents who've already replaced one or more of their home gas-powered heating, water heating, cooking, or other appliances with electric alternatives are available to answer questions from others who want to make the switch. This free service provides information on rebates, suggestions about how to get started, informal referrals to contractors, and recommendations on equipment. So if anyone would like to get in touch with a home electrification ambassador, they just need to go to fossilfreebuildings.org, scroll down to, there's a button for the electric home ambassador program. You fill in a little form with your contact information, answer a couple of questions so we can see what kind of help you need, and then an ambassador will get in touch with you. So again, the website is fossilfreebuildings.org. And you might also see one of our yard signs as you're walking around town. If you scan the QR code on that sign, it'll take you directly to our website where you can find more information. So we look forward to hearing from any resident or council member who has questions about how to go electric. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is Zoe B. Should be able to unmute.
Hello?
Hi.
Okay. Hello and good evening, honorary San Carlos City Council members. My name is Zoe, and I am a resident of Redwood Shores and a senior at Karma High School. I'm really passionate about the environment and climate change, including the aspect of trying to reduce the use of fossil fuels. Fossil fuels are extremely detrimental to not only the planet, but also to humans. In August of 2020, I heard on the news that a vessel crashed into a fragile coral reef super close to Mauritius, a country in East Africa, and started leaking out with highly toxic and heavy oil. This incident, known as the Mauritius Oil Spill, ended up damaging the island's food system, nature, and the residents' health. The water was contaminated, and a lot of the marine life was killed. After finding out about this unfortunate incident, I felt a wave of different emotions. First off, I was appalled that something like this was let happen. There should have been much better equipment used to transport something as destructive to the ocean as oil. Additionally, I, I also felt horrible that the country of Mauritius had to go through this. Their economy plummeted as the spill deterred tourism, and the environment was simply just not healthy for quite a bit of time. All of this being said, for the sake of the planet's and people's health, I strongly believe that it is a good idea to divest from fossil fuel companies in order to prevent another costly and harmful event like this from happening. Thank you so much for listening, and I hope you consider divesting to join the many other cities that have already done so.
Thank you, Zoe.
Thank you, Zoe. Next up, we have, next up, we have former San Carlos Councilmember and Mayor Mark Ober. You should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Crystal. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. And how long does it take before I start, start, start getting that preamble? But anyway, I appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor Palmer Lohan, Vice Mayor McDowell, and Councilmembers Rack, Collins, and Dugan. I hope you and your families are all doing well, or as well as can be expected during these crazy pandemic times. A week and a half ago, I attended a Central Labor Committee event honoring Raina Lehman on the eve of her well-deserved retirement. It was a great event, and I appreciated those of you who either showed up in person or expressed your gratitude to Raina for all she's done for the working men and women of San Mateo County. In reading through the banquet's program, however, I came across something interesting. There were a good number of ads from political candidates, as is to be expected with some big elections coming up. But I noticed the one for Mayor Palmer Lohan included the official San Carlos city seal. I understand the Council can authorize the use of the seal for different purposes, but I'm sorry I missed the discussion when this usage was approved because it must have touched on some interesting aspects of the law. Can you please direct me to the meeting when this use of the city seal was approved? I'd like to listen to the, the discussion that took place. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Stay healthy and stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Next up is Coleman Young. You should be able to unmute.
Hello and good evening, San Carlos Council members. My name is Coleman Young, a resident of Millbrae and a rising senior at Mills High School. Now, did you know that, on average, plastic bags are used for 12 minutes, then stay untouched for the next few hundred years? Mainly serving as a threat to wildlife, spreading toxins, and a factor of global warming? Fortunately, as of July 1st, 2019, the city of San Francisco had begun effectuating the ban on single-use plastic sales and distributions. They were also the first city to ban single-use plastic bags in 2007, and many cities followed suit, including Millbrae in 2012 and San Carlos in 2013. And now, as part of a statewide effort, Proposition 67, also known as SB 270, has led to a 71.5% drop in overall plastic bag consumption, amounting to a massive decrease of around 40 million pounds of plastic waste. There has also been a noticeable decrease in plastic bag turn-up at the Bay Area beaches, from 9% of waste in the past to becoming below 1%. And the remainder are drink bottles, bottle caps, lids, food wraps, utensils, stirs, and shaws remain unfettered and will continue to do so without restrictions. From the time I went volunteering for beach cleanups to the dreadful view of seagulls engulfing bits of foreign objects, sadly, plastic waste is inevitable. While this process may be demanding and tiresome, I'm asking that San Carlos begin drafting its single-use plastic ban ordinance as soon as possible. That way, there will be greater effort to reduce plastic waste in the bay, damaging and intoxicating our ecosystems. Although plastic bans won't solve the plastic crisis alone, its mere influence on plastic consumption habits, things we take for granted, will redirect consumers to be open to more environmentally friendly alternatives. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Coleman.
Thank you, Coleman.
Next up is Amanda. You should be able to unmute now.
Okay. Hello and good evening, San Carlos City Council members. My name is Amanda Yu, and I'm a rising freshman at Stanford Online High School. I wanted to take a few minutes today and talk to you about a term problem that's becoming more and more prevalent: plastic. More than half a billion plastic straws are used every day around the world. The main issue with all of this plastic is the dangerous effects it's having on our world. Poor communities tend to live closer to areas that are heavily impacted by the negative effects of plastic. As a result, they unfairly have to suffer the consequences such as heavy air pollution due to plastic production and incineration. They're exposed to medical conditions such as asthma that they would have never gotten inflicted with before. When I was around four years old, I was hospitalized with severe asthma. I still remember lying in my hospital bed in the dark with the tubes around my head, a hole from a straw hooked into the back of my hand as I realized that it was getting harder to breathe. Almost immediately after I recovered, my brother was hospitalized with severe asthma as well. Those weeks at the hospital were some of the worst that my family has ever experienced. For young children to suddenly be exposed to and contract asthma simply because of the place they live in is perpetuating injustice. They have no control over their living conditions but are punished for it anyway. And it's not just asthma that these communities are being unfairly exposed to. Plastic-producing facilities release toxic chemicals into the air, many of them being carcinogenic. There are more than 100 dangerous chemicals in the air pollution from plastic production. The people living near these facilities are less susceptible to cancers and diseases, even though they never would have had in, in any other circumstance that may have no way to stop it, as their homes and livelihoods are all rooted near these facilities. Plastic pollution threatens communities of regular civilians, and the ban on single-use plastics is definitely a way we can solve things. I strongly urge you to pass this ordinance. Thank you so much for listening, and thank you for considering my request.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Next up is Jake Kim.
Hello. Um, hello and thank you, honorary San Carlos City Council members. My name is Jake, and I am a resident of Millbrae and a senior at Mills High School. I'm very passionate about the environment and life, which is why I particularly enjoyed my AP Biology course last year. One thing that stuck to me as a bio student is a biological phenomenon known as biomagnification, in which toxin concentrations in organisms are significantly amplified when they are consumed by a predator, which in many cases are us. After getting strangled by plastic bags and poisoned by plastic consumption, the surviving marine animals face the challenge of human radiation. But as it turns out, this phenomenon called biomagnification makes it just as much of a problem for us as it is to capture tuna and salmon. Every time we prepare ourselves a nice seafood meal, we unknowingly increase our susceptibility to certain cancers: liver failure, birth defects, brain damage, and heart disease because, because of the amplified effects of plastics and toxin. Therefore, plastic pollution threatens our local ecosystems as well as public health. Plastic reaches storm drains and oceans due to national, natural forces such as wind and rain. And unless we can somehow play god and control these natural forces, we need to focus on reducing our plastic usage instead. I strongly urge you to pass a single-use plastic ban ordinance and ask that you mandate the use of reusable silverware whenever possible. Again, thank you for your time, and thank you for considering my request.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you. Next up is Nicole. She'll be able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello and thank you, honorary San Carlos City Council members. My name is Nicole, and I live in the Bay Area as a rising freshman at Saratoga High School. Ever since I was in kindergarten, my family and I have gone fishing for at least once a year, getting on boats and driving away to places around half an hour away from the dock. Every once in a while, however, I see trash floating near the rocks that jet out in the middle of the sea. When I was very young, I saw these pieces of trash and remembering some of the news or accounts that my teacher at the time had shown me in my classmates. "That doesn't belong here," I thought. I was in first grade at the time, so I didn't know what could be done to stop these pieces of trash from staying in the ocean. Plastic debris left in the ocean can cause many sea animals to fall victim to suffocation, starvation, drowning, and other health effects, which in turn can be passed on from one predator to another and eventually to us. The effects of consuming these animals can lead to many harmful chemicals being put into our digestive system, including some that increase health risks such as organ problems and developmental aging children. Although I also encourage a full ocean cleanup, I want to ask you today to pass a single-use plastic ban, and I ask that you enforce it as soon as possible. Thank you for listening to my composition, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And she was, oh, actually, nope, one hand just came up. Victoria Lynn. You should be able to unmute.
Hi. Sorry, I, my Wi-Fi was cutting out, so I didn't realize it was the public comment segment. Um, can, is it, can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Good morning, honorary San Carlos Council members. My name is Victoria Lynn. I'm currently a senior at Mills High School and a member of the Bay Area Youth Climate Action Team. Even before this, even before this pandemic, single-use plastics were found scattered in all sorts of places, ranging from food packaging in our grocery stores to gutters in our very own bay. However, the need to decrease our consumption of plastic has only exponentially increased. The fact of the matter is that we're running out of space to throw away our trash. The COVID-19 pandemic has only escalated the situation as takeout, as takeout meals have become even more popularized, resulting in even more single-use plastics being circulated in the form of plastic bags and utensils. The EPA reported that in one year alone, our total amount of trash generated in 2018 was 292.4 million tons, approximately 23.7 tons, million tons more than the amount thrown away in 2017. The Global Citizen states that our nation is on track to run out of space in our landfills within the next 18 years. While I understand that limiting certain one-time-use plastics such as disposable masks isn't really a possibility right now because of our circumstances, that's no reason to completely push the conversation of banning single-use plastics in other forms to the side. A whopping 91% of plastics is either never recycled or can't be fully recycled. This fact alone demonstrates that the inevitable threat of our cities filling to the brim with garbage will become our reality sooner than reports can say. Our world is becoming even more advanced every single day, and we must keep up with the pace. Plastics are a figment of the past. We now have the technology to make biodegradable footwear and reusable everyday products. The time to act is now. I strongly, strongly encourage you to pass the plastics ordinance. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And she was our last speaker.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So at this point, now we'll move to the consent calendar. So what I would suggest is that we take, Adam, I understand you have to accuse yourself for item K, so shall we do that now, and then we'll come back to the rest of the items?
Jump off for a second?
Yeah, sure. And then, okay. All right. So at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion for consent calendar item seven.
Madam Mayor, I'll move for-
Okay, Ron.
I'll move the, we approve the consent calendar items A through N with the exception of item K.
So, so we're doing it the other way around? Items recused?
Oh, all right. Well, I apologize. We're gonna just, we're gonna approve. I, I, I propose that we approve consent calendar item K. And having said that, I probably should have let Sarah do it.
I second Ron's excellent motion.
All right. Thank you. Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack has been recused. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
All right. And Crystal, can you let Adam know that we're, we've moved on? All right. Welcome back. Councilmember Rack? All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the balance of consent calendar items, assuming none others need to be pulled.
I'll move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through N with the exception of K, which has already been approved. Second.
All right. Thank you. Crystal, could you please call the roll, assuming there's no one interested in making public comment?
There are no hands, so I'll go ahead and proceed. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
All right. At this point, well, we'll move on to new business item A. This is considering, consideration of adoption, adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a temporary parking license with the San Mateo County Transit District to allow downtown employees to use up to 75 parking spaces at the top of the agency's parking garage, located at 1250 San Carlos Avenue, at a cost of $35 per six-month permit, appropriating $48,000 from the General Fund Unassigned Balance in fiscal year 2021 to '22, and $49,605 fiscal year 2022 to '23 to the community development budget to cover the costs. And three, amending the downtown employee parking program fee from $96 to $35 every six months on the City of San Carlos user fee schedule fiscal year '21 to '22. And the presentation tonight will be brought to us by Adam Aronson, Economic Development and Housing Manager. Welcome, Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So yes, I'll be giving the presentation tonight on the Sam Trans parking garage license and downtown employee permit per game. Sorry, I think I went backwards a slide.
Okay, that's weird. Hold on a second to me. You somehow jumped. There it goes.
Sorry, Crystal. I'm not sure if that's me or not. If you want to control the slides, feel free to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take over.
Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay. So this is just a map showing where the Sam Trans garage is. You'll see it with the orange rectangle in the top right of the screen. The entrance is on Laurel Street between Holly Street and San Carlos Avenue. And then while we're on the slide, I also just wanted to point out the red rectangle. It's in the bottom left corner of the screen. This is the Caltrain parking lot, and the city is executing an agreement with Sam Trans for free public parking on nights and weekends in this red outlined area. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that that is available, and we'll be working on promoting it over the coming weeks. Next slide, please. So the key deal terms of the temporary parking license are the rent will be $4,000 per month or $48,000 annually, and the amount would be appropriated from the General Fund Unassigned Balance, which does have room for this adjustment. And then annual escalations would be tied to the Consumer Price Index, which for the last year was 3.2%. The terms of the license are month-to-month, with both the city and Sam Trans having the right to terminate the agreement with 30 days written in this, and then applies to the 75 parking spaces located at the top of the garage. Next slide, please. And there is some guidance we need from the Council on the parking permit fee amount. So we prevented, we presented three options here. The first would just be for the, for the permit fee to be free. The second is for it to be $35 every six months. And then this is the staff recommendation because it would align with the existing East Side Employee Parking Permit Program and the amount that is currently being charged there. And then option three is $96 every six months, and this is the current fee level. So while we're not technically running a downtown employee parking program at the moment, there is a fee in the user fee schedule of $96, but staff is recommending that we lower that to $35 to align with the East Side program. Next slide, please. So this is the alternative that's available to you tonight. There are essentially three actions that the Council would need to take. The first being to authorize the city manager to execute the parking license, and that would set the rate at $35 per permit for every six months. And the second would appropriate $48,000 in FY '21, '22, and then $49,622, '23. And the third action would amend the downtown employee program fee in the user fee schedule from $96 to $35, though that can certainly be adjusted if the Council has a different alternative they would prefer. And so I'll leave this up, but I'm happy to take any questions, Madam.
All right. Thank you, Adam. So we'll, this is a new business item. We'll take questions, then public comment, and go back to council comment discussion before entertaining a motion. So are there any questions from council at this time? All right. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Adam. A good overview discussion. Quick question. Do we have any sense of anticipated demand for this? Do we think this is adequately sized? Are we looking for more opportunities to add employee parking? Or is it, we're gonna try this for a bit and see where it takes us?
So I think, I, I think there will certainly be more demand, and there are parking spaces available here. So for the beginning, at least, we'll have to limit it, and we'll be able to be available to everybody. And the idea is that we would kind of give it on a lottery basis, based on how many people apply. But we are- But we are looking for other options that are available as well. I believe Stephen Machida, Public Works Director, has identified, I believe, 50 spaces in the second floor of the Wheeler Garage that we might also be able to designate as employee parking.
I see, and if it's a lottery-type basis, how will that, like, if you, if you win the lottery and you keep renewing it, you can have it indefinitely? Or every six months or a year, it's kind of a fresh lottery for it? Have you guys thought through that yet?
The idea is that you would keep it, but we would want to make sure that there's enforcement to align those permits with license plates, to make sure people aren't just passing them on to someone else after they've left and no longer need it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Adam, thank you for the, the report. I was looking at the staff report and I'm trying to figure out if, given that we're paying $4,000 a month in lease payments to SAM Trans and we are going to be getting revenue, what, what's the net cost or income to the city, or projected, estimated?
So if we charge the $35 every six months, $70 a year, I believe that comes out to around $5,000. So that's about a $43,000 cost to the city.
All right, so there's not, there's no intention that we're gonna recover our cost to rent this space?
I think to recover the cost completely, we'd need to be charging somewhere around $600 a year.
Okay, well, that was, that was my, that was my question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Adam, for your work on this, and I'm really glad that we're talking about this tonight. My question for you, so just to clarify, this is a lease of just the top floor of the SAM Trans Garage, correct?
Yes.
And it's all day, all night? If someone's working the late shift, they, you know, they're closing down the restaurant, don't get out there until midnight, that, it would cover that, correct?
That's correct. If you have a permit, you could park there long-term, up to 12 hours, is what we're saying, but.
12 hours.
Anytime of day.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, and I guess I'll, I'll just kind of couch this with my experience being a woman and parking late at night up in that top level of the garage, it feels dark and it feels kind of remote. And so if I'm a server, you know, closing down the restaurant and I'm not leaving the restaurant until 11 or 12 at night, getting up to that top story feels a little, I don't know, not really my favorite place to park. So I'm wondering if there were any discussions with SAM Trans about allowing permitted parking maybe on a lower level after business hours and not so far away?
Yeah, it's unfortunately a genuine concern, and so far SAM Trans hasn't been willing to let us go any lower in the garage. They really want to reserve those spaces for their own use. Part of the reason we've also been looking at the Wheeler Garage, it's hopefully, feels a little more open, and especially as the garage gets painted in the future and there's some more signage and lights put up, hopefully that will go a little better as well, but the truth is, it's not ideal in this particular location.
Okay, all right, thanks, Adam.
All right, Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Adam, thanks for the presentation, just had a couple of quick questions. Do you have a sense for the, when the timing is to maybe designate that parking at Wheeler?
I don't, I'll defer to Stephen to answer that question.
Good evening, Chair City Councilmember Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. To answer your question, Councilmember Rack, we're in the process of actually stenciling the permit parking area, so actually that could probably happen within the next two to three weeks.
Awesome. And is there, just sort of, have we ever talked to Caltrain at all about using more of that parking right now, given that their ridership is down and there might be a way for them to recoup some additional revenue, stuff that was closer to sort of the center of downtown?
We have, and they haven't been willing to give us anything more than those 100 spaces nights and weekends that were already previously agreed to. They, they believe that they're going to soon be using those spaces soon, is what they've said.
And then, thank you. And then just lastly, in terms of, once we get the, let's say this gets approved for the 75, and then we have another 50 at Wheeler, is there, and maybe this is a question for the chief, is there a plan to sort of do some more enforcement around, around employee parking or parking, you know, sort of short-term parking? And then also, you know, are we gonna maybe communicate that more out, that hey, these opportunities are there and what kind, because I want to understand how we're making incentivizing also these, the employees and the employers to work together to utilize these parking spaces?
Yeah, we certainly plan to market these spaces, both generally to those employees that work in the downtown, but also directly to businesses through either, you know, emails and flyers and the council newsletter and things like that, but signage as well. With regards to enforcement, I'll defer that to either Stephen or the chief to answer.
Hello, everyone, yes, we will enforce whatever is posted and whatever agreement we have with the businesses.
Great, thank you.
All right, I don't see any additional hands raised from council for questions, Crystal. So are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment on this item at this time?
I am not seeing any hands.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I think we can move to council comment and discussion. Who would like to open it up? All right, well, I'll start. So I just, I want to thank staff for bringing this forward in conversations with, you know, many of the business owners and restaurants downtown as well as residents, people who enjoy our downtown area. I've heard that parking is, continues to be a bit of an issue. So I think that this is a unique solution and one that I understand we've done in the past. So I really appreciate the opportunity to explore this this evening, and I appreciate the questions that were raised earlier, in particular Vice Mayor McDowell, I think you raised some really good points about just safety issues in general. So if there's things that we can do to try to enhance the program from a safety perspective, that would be interesting to me as well. And I also think bringing it in line with the other fee-based program that we have in play makes sense to me. So with that, looks like Councilmember Dugan and then Councilmember Collins.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I agree, it's, I'm glad to have this before us this evening. Parking on Laurel has, you know, always been, been a topic of discussion and a bit of an issue in all the meetings I have downtown, it always comes up, and we all kind of feel it personally, I'd imagine too. So I think this will be quite meaningful, not just for people parking to use our businesses in our downtown, but for the employees themselves. It's very inconvenient to have two-hour parking when you're on a, say, an eight-hour shift. And that just creates a lot of congestion and traffic, people shuttling their cars around or trying to park deep in a neighborhood. So I thoroughly support this. I hope it's a start, we'll see what the demand is. I very much support doing more of this, and I'm happy to subsidize it at the $35 level in parity with, with the East Side. And if there are opportunities with Caltrain or to find a better rate or something, by all means, but I'm happy to make this investment in the town. And if there is anything we can do to improve security or look at lighting or anything else we can do to make this a better program, I would fully support that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say that I think this is a good item that we brought forward, and I'm in support of staff's proposal.
All right, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you. Ronnie, you were very succinct. I too appreciate this creative solution, I really appreciate, I don't know if the subcommittee, I'm sure they worked on this, I appreciate everyone's time kind of looking at ways to relieve pressure on the downtown, so I'm appreciative of that. I am glad to hear that we're just taking a look at Wheeler Plaza too, because that second story of parking has so far been underutilized. I support making the fee equal to that charged to the East Side businesses. I appreciate everyone's support for kind of looking at increasing safety on the top level of the SAM Trans Garage, perhaps we can look at, you know, our sheriff's office kind of doing some drive-throughs at night too. Anything that can be done to make people feel a little safer up there would be wonderful. And I also note that we're looking, we entered into an MOU with SAM Trans, as Adam mentioned. If demand is just overwhelming for this program, I'd also support looking at possibly a weekend permit employee parking over there to kind of help meet the demand. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any further discussion? All right, I'll, I'd be willing to entertain a motion at this point.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-.
Seventy-eight.
Resolution, seventy-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing the city manager to execute a temporary parking license with the San Mateo County Transit District to allow downtown employees, employees to use up to 75 parking spaces at the top of the agency's parking garage at 1250 San Carlos Avenue at a cost of $35 per six-month permit appropriating $48,000 from the general fund unassigned balance in fiscal year 2021-2022, and $49,600 in fiscal year 2022-2023 to the community development budget to cover the costs. And amend the, many the downtown employee parking program fee from $96 to $35 every six months in the City of San Carlos user fee schedule for fiscal year 2021-2022.
I'll second that.
Thanks. Any further discussion? All right, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Loham?
Yes. All right, thank you. So that moves us to item 10B, consideration of adopting a resolution, adopting a memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and the American Local 856 Freight Checkers, Clerical Employees and Helpers Union International Brotherhood of Teamsters Unit for the period of September 1st, 2021 through August 20, August 31st, 2023. And presenting on this item tonight is Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Welcome, Rebecca.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Tonight is the consideration of the memorandum of understanding, or the MOU, with our Teamsters Unit. The Teamsters Unit includes 19 budgeted positions that include the mechanic, the maintenance workers, and our senior maintenance workers. Before I go into the provisions, I'd like to thank the employees of this unit who've worked with us to reach this agreement. The existing MOU is set to expire as of August 31st this year, so this new agreement calls for a two-year term with a three-year COLA increase each year. Two years ago, the council agreed to the terms of a side letter, which changed the overtime definition to allow for the inclusion of certain types of paid leave to be included in the overtime calculation. This MOU incorporates that side letter language into the agreement, so there is no change in benefit. Next slide, please. Similar to the other units, our APSME Confidential and Management Units, the city has agreed that employees can make a one-time election to cash out vacation in an amount up to 40 hours in accordance with IRS regulations. This will allow employees to liquidate some of their vacation that's been building up while we were under the shelter-in-place orders. Also included is a new benefit for a deferred comp matching program, up to $50 per biweekly pay period. Next slide. And finally, the Teamsters Unit opted out of the voluntary employee, employee benefit program or the VIVO program effective September 1st. This was a benefit that was set up several years ago at no cost to the city, where employees could convert vacation time into a retirement health savings account at a maximum of $200 a year. Over time, this unit has determined that this is a benefit they no longer wish to continue. The total cost of the changes for this MOU is $96,600 in the first year and $100,000 in the second year. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right, are there any questions from council? All right, seeing none. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment?
No, there are no hands at this time.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All right, Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Find the mute button. I just want to thank Rebecca and her team for the negotiations and also the good faith effort from the Teamsters in terms of, I think this was a really great and useful discussion, and I think we ended up in a good place. I'm happy to support this and look forward to continuing to work with everyone for our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack, I concur. Thank you for those sentiments. Councilmember Collins?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add my, my thanks to Rebecca and her team for their hard work on, on putting this together.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to echo my colleagues, this was a good example of, of negotiating unit being realistic and flexible in a tough year, and then the city getting to a good, good place. And I, you know, I haven't seen too many of these labor negotiations so far, and they, I'm encouraged that it can be as collaborative as this one seemed to be, so a nice job with that, Rebecca.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell, I see you took your, yourself off mute, did you want to make a remark?
I was just gonna agree with my colleagues and make the motion, so with your permission.
Yeah, please do.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting a memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and the American Local 856 Freight Checkers Clerical Employees and Helpers Union International Brotherhood of Teamsters Unit for the period of September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? All right, seeing none. Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Loham?
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, so with that, we'll move to Study Session 9A, Discuss the Model Ordinance Recently Adopted by the County of San Mateo Limiting the Distribution of Disposable Food Service Wear. And presenting on this item this evening is Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. Welcome, Stephen.
Not quite, it'll be me presenting on this this evening. No problem, Stephen probably was panicking there, but good evening. Members of the City Council, my name's Adam Lowkarma, Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office, and I'll be giving the presentation this evening on the effort across our county to limit the distribution of single-use disposable footwear.
Looks like there's some issue with Zoom and, and the remote control tonight, so I'll go in ahead and, and take over that.
So I'll start by providing background on some of the issues related to single-use disposable plastics. Many single-use disposable plastics are used just once before they become waste, that takes years to break down, and are a major contributor to street litter. When it rains, that, that plastic can end up polluting our creeks and eventually the bay, where they can have negative impacts on wildlife. Plastics in the ocean eventually break down into microplastics that can be ingested by sea life, ending up in our food and eventually our bodies having, having negative health impacts. And at the same time, certain plastics, particularly those numbered three through seven, are increasingly challenging to recycle as there's just a lack of demand within international recycling markets for these low-grade plastics. So in response to these issues, the city has identified limiting the distribution of single-use plastics as an objective in the 2021 strategic plan and also in the current draft climate mitigation and adaptation plan. Next slide, please. Also in an effort to address this issue, the County of San Mateo Board of Supervisors adopted a model ordinance last year that aims to eliminate the unnecessary distribution and use of disposable food service ware that is not. and use of disposable food service ware that is not reusable or compostable, improve the health and safety of our community, and help keep waterways and beaches clean. Since the county adopted this ordinance, there are nine other jurisdictions in our county that have adopted the same model ordinance. Next slide, please. So, ordinance applies to food service providers, which is any entity that provides prepared food for consumption, and generally includes any establishment with a health permit. So, this includes restaurants, grocery stores, cafes, and also temporary establishments like festivals, farmers' markets, food trucks, and also private schools and healthcare facilities. It should be noted, this would include city facilities that prepare food for public consumption, like the adult community center. Next slide, please. The ordinance then requires certain disposable footwear distributed at these facilities be non-plastic fiber-based compostable. That means they're derived from materials such as paper, sugarcane, wheat stalk, bamboo, or wood, and must also be certified by a third-party entity such as the Biodegradable Products Institute. So, this requirement specifically applies to the list of items here: plates, bowls, cups, food trays, clamshells, and other containers. So, here on the slide, you can see some examples of acceptable items under this ordinance. It's important to note that compostable plastics would not be allowed for these items. Compostable plastics are materials that have the look and the feel of a traditional plastic, but it's been found that they're very confusing to customers on what bin to discard them in, and they don't usually break down easily in our environment, so they still contribute to pollution issues in waterways. Next slide, please. So, in addition, for small footwear accessories, so things like cup sleeves, napkins, condiment packets, they must only be available upon request by the customer, upon acceptance if a food provider asks a customer if they would want one of these items, or at a self-service area. In addition, there are four specific small accessories listed here: straws, stirs, utensils, and toothpicks that must also be non-plastic fiber-based compostable. For items not listed here or on the previous slide, the most notable being lids for cups and bowls, they're still allowed to be plastic, they're just, they just have to be recyclable or compostable per the facility's collection service. Next slide, please. So, here are the exceptions to the ordinance. The first exception just clarifies that this ordinance only applies to prepared food and not prepackaged food. So, prepackaged food would be anything that is sealed, that has an expiration date. So, this ordinance only impacts food that is prepared onsite and distributed for consumption. The second exception allows customers with medical needs that may make it difficult for them to drink without a straw. They're allowed to request a plastic straw, and at the same time, healthcare facilities can distribute plastic straws and do not have to ask the customer. Drive-through areas can distribute straws and cup sleeves without the request from the customer, and this is just to prevent possible spilling of drinks. There could be a safety hazard there. Foodware made up entirely of aluminum foil is exempt. And then the county will also be considering hardship exemptions on a case-by-case basis. If there's either a specific footwear item that doesn't have a readily available compostable alternative, that can be put, made temporarily exempt until there is a readily available alternative. And the county will also consider financial hardships. If the additional cost to purchase a suitable footwear is deemed to cause significant economic hardship, then the food facility can submit a request for exemption. Next slide, please. So, in passing this ordinance, the county has offered support to other jurisdictions that adopt the same model ordinance without changes. That support includes education and outreach services to food providers and consumers. The county has contracted with a company called Environmental Innovations. They're going to be providing mailers, hosting workshops, developing a resource guide, providing really one-on-one direct support, keeping a list of acceptable products on the county website, just to support food providers during this transition. The county is also offering direct technical and limited financial support to food providers through their footwear aware program to forego disposable footwear entirely and transition to reusable footwear. And they're also offering to provide enforcement services for jurisdictions that adopt the same ordinance. So, the enforcement of this ordinance would be complaint-based, with the county relying primarily on education and direct support to ensure compliance. So, to take advantage of this enforcement services, the city would have to enter into an MOU with the county, which is the same format we currently have for our polystyrene ban and our disposable plastic bag ordinance. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, there are nine other jurisdictions in our county that have adopted the same model ordinance, and they're shown here along with their ordinance effective date. Most cities have chosen to align their effective date with the county, which is in March 2022. The exceptions being Hafn Bay, they just started enforcing their ordinance last month, and the City of San Mateo that chose to put off their effective date until October 2022. Next slide, please. So, tonight, we're here to answer any of your questions you might have about this model ordinance and this effort we're brought in to seek council direction. Should council direct staff to move forward with adopting this model ordinance, we can return at a later council meeting for ordinance introduction. Next slide. And that concludes my presentation. I'm joined this evening by Unsu Lim, a Senior Sustainability Specialist with the County Office of Sustainability, and we're both available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Adam. And again, my apologies for misappropriating you earlier this evening when I introduced you. So, thank you for the very thorough presentation this evening. All right, lots of hands up on this, and I apologize, I missed the order, so I'm just going to go with what I think it is, which is starting off with Councilmember Rack, followed by Collins, Vice Mayor McDowell, and then Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Adam, thanks for the presentation. I appreciate that. It was very thorough. I had a couple of questions, just so I'm clear on a couple of things. So, one, we're only talking about prepared foods, and so I guess we've got, you've got grocery stores who also have, you know, they can still sell plastic plates, plastic forks, knives in bulk on their shelves. Is that correct?
That's right, yeah. It's just for the actual footwear itself. That's, so if it's a grocery store, I think of like a salad bar or hot food to go or something like that.
And then, and we're not looking at sort of plastic bags that are used for fruits and vegetables that sort of, if you go to the store and say, "I'm going to grab two lemons," you know, that doesn't have to be compostable in terms of following the county model ordinance.
No, that's right. This doesn't pertain to, like, produce bags.
Okay. And we're not looking at potentially anything with regard to, you know, we've got some large developments coming in on the commercial side of, you know, with biotech coming in, the Alexandra facility with, you know, thousands of employees is coming in. There's nothing in there to require them to use compostable products that are, you know, if they have any reusable product, or non-reusable products.
Right. I guess it depends if they're like a public-facing facility. If they're required a health permit, then they likely would be, but it depends if they're just internal, private, or public-facing.
I understand. So, if they have a, if they need a health permit, which they might be because they're serving prepared food, they likely would, right? It's not that, it's not sort of the in-their-cat little kitchen area, but, okay, that would be required. And can I just ask, I know Unsu from the county is here. Was there a reason that you didn't look at the, sort of that grocery store question around the bags and the, you know, plastic utensils that they sell?
Unsu, are you here? Can you address that question?
I am here. Yes, so the plastic bags, that's a great question, and we do get asked that a few times here and there. So, the plastic bag, the produce bag, it's actually, it would fall under a separate ordinance, the plastic bag ban or the reusable bag ordinance, that is managed by our colleagues at Environmental Health Department and not by the Office of Sustainability. So, they are two different ordinances. So, if you, if the city is interested in, or if any jurisdiction, as a matter of fact, is interested in looking to add produce plastic bags as part of the ban, then I would highly recommend going through the plastic bag or reusable bag ban ordinance, because ordinance that Adam is talking about today is specifically for disposable footwear that's used for prepared food. So, yes, it is, they both touch upon plastic, but the usage is a little bit different. And so, the target audience, the target, the target, the target audience, in this case, is going to be specifically food facilities versus for the reusable bag ban. It's like supermarkets and grocery stores and doesn't really include a lot of the restaurants that would, that would fall under this particular disposable food service ordinance.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, I know we have a plastic bag ban in San Carlos, so I guess I'd maybe ask if, I'd be curious just offline if staff could let me know about sort of where our, our sort of ordinance falls in place with that, not tonight, but at another time. Thanks, those are my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Rack. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Adam, thank you for the presentation. It's also nice to know that we have so many employees named Adam. It just cuts down on the number of names I need to memorize. Just wanted to be clear, you mentioned that if we adopt this ordinance and we don't change it, then we benefit from the county's enforcement of its provisions. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. So, and I suppose that there are other things that we wanted to do that maybe we weren't entirely happy with this ordinance, but there were some other restrictions that we wanted to impose. We could consider a separate ordinance that would satisfy the needs or the desires of some of our council members or public. Is that correct?
That's right, yeah. If you were to do something extra or something like that, it would just be on the city to enforce and to educate. It wouldn't fall under kind of like the county's offering here with this model.
And refresh my memory, our plastic bag ordinance is the county model, is that correct? Because we get that, we benefit from that enforcement as well?
That's right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I think this is long overdue. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. You and Su, I see you have your hand up. Did you want to respond to Councilmember Collins' comments or questions?
Yes. And you, that's a really great question, and I do want to add on to Adam's answer a little bit more. It's a little bit nuanced. So, we do have a couple of cities that expressed interest in tweaking the county's model ordinance, and specifically to make it slightly more included, including more aggressive measures and provisions. So, for instance, City of Hafn Bay, they wanted to really push for reusable footwear, and that's because they're along the coast and they are seeing the impacts of plastic footwear on their beaches every single day. And so, for them, the city council, it was a very high priority to really try to start getting away from disposables and start really requiring reusables. So, they were interested in kicking it up a notch, so to speak, the ordinance, and including a reusables requirement. And so, we did speak with them, and they were, they were able to include the reusables requirement within the ordinance, but we made sure that they understood that for that particular provision, the city staff, we're going to be relying very heavily on city staff to conduct education and especially enforcement around that provision. So, if a city is interested in going beyond putting in more aggressive provisions within the model county's ordinance, the county, we are very definitely open to have that discussion. But I do want to bring up the, you know, make it clear that any additional provisions that go beyond the county's provision, we are going to be looking very heavily towards city staff to conduct education as well as enforcement around those provisions. But it can be done. It really depends on what it is and how the county and city staff can collaborate on it.
Thank you, Unsu. That was, that was very helpful.
All right, Vice Mayor McDowell, and then we'll go to Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Adam, thank you so much for the presentation. I have two quick questions. I noticed in the staff report that in the outreach portion, a letter was sent out to 154 food service providers in town, and I'm wondering if you heard any feedback so far on that letter that was sent out?
We have not heard any feedback yet.
Okay, great. And then, I think the plastic ban, the plastic bag ordinance was before my time on the council. Can you just remind me what it bans? Grocery store, single-use bags? We received a lot of public comments on that, so if you just have a quick summary of what is currently banned with the bags, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. It's a disposable plastic bag ban at grocery stores. So, you may, you may still see plastic bags at restaurants, in takeout, and you may still see plastic bags at grocery stores of a certain thickness, because once they're of a certain thickness, they're considered reusable. But the real flimsy disposable plastic bags are banned from grocery stores.
Okay, great. Thanks, Adam. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, thank you, Adam, for the report. Yeah, I'm glad to hear we haven't received any strenuous feedback from our restaurants, and I'm glad we've already started our outreach on that. Do we have any understanding of what kind of imposition this might be in our restaurants? You know, I'm generally supportive of this, but it is an awkward time to be laying new requirements on restaurants. Do, you know, are these substitute items readily available? Are the costs comparable? You know, is there any understanding of what kind of burden this may be on the average restaurant?
Yes, so the, first, the items in the ordinance, those very specific lists, those are chosen because there are readily available compostable alternatives. They are more expensive than plastic counterparts, the extent to which varies depending on the item. The ordinance is written in such a way that it does require, in some instances, a more expensive footwear item, but also attempts to limit the distribution through that, through the requirements on small accessories. So, hopefully, there's some, you know, recouping some cost savings there by just reducing the amount that is distributed. And then, and then there are the exceptions, financial hardship exceptions, and then on a case-by-case basis, if a food provider has a unique, you know, item, that there just isn't something that's available that county can consider, and they have a list already of kind of temporary exceptions that, that there just aren't good alternatives on the market. So, trying to make it as feasible as possible.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any sense of, you know, how much enforcement will be required to get something like this working? And it sounds like our plan may be to leverage the county resources for enforcement. So, a secondary question is, what will the cost be to San Carlos if we go ahead and hire the county in this capacity?
The free of cost is my understanding. Unsu, you may correct me, but for enforcement services. And then, and then, Unsu, maybe you could talk a little bit about, I guess, so far enforcement in Hafn Bay and how that's been going?
Absolutely. And yes, Adam is correct in saying it's free, free for the city. So, as Adam mentioned in his presentation, if a city jurisdiction decides to adopt the county's ordinance for their jurisdiction, then the county, we will offer to conduct both education as well as enforcement. We'll take the lead in those areas, of course, with coordination with city staff. So, it won't be, you know, the city won't be hiring the county. We'll be going into an MOU with the city so that we have a general understanding of the expectations as well as rules, and, which we already have. And I share the MOU with Adam. And so, and all the other cities that have adopted have been signing the MOU as well. The MOU clearly lays out all the expectations as well, the rules for both parties, the county as well as the city. And as for enforcement, it is complaint-based, so we will be relying heavily on our public to share with us and report to us any food facilities that are not complying. And so, in Hafn Bay, it's still a little bit too early to tell because they literally went, started enforcing a month and a half ago, and we're still giving a lot of flexibility in terms of providing extra help to some of the food facilities. I need additional time. So, we haven't enforced anything so far, and we're And, and we're, we're really, um, front-loading a lot of education and technical assistance, and we're hoping that that will help offset, um, the enforcement or the hard enforcement, so to speak, that we may need to do later on. So we're going to be reserving the hard enforcement really for those repeated violators who still, after multiple attempts of trying to reach out to them and educating them, still refuse to come into compliance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, really good questions from council tonight. I appreciate the exploration on, um, uh, the various aspects of this. Um, one, uh, question I had was around the survey. So my understanding, I hea- I heard you say, um, that, uh, there wasn't much feedback from, if any, from the restaurants. In that survey, was there any question with respect, respect to reusables? Uh, because it strikes me that that adds a completely different element to the workflow. So for example, if a a restaurant is reliant upon, um, takeout materials, um, and then we move to a requirement for re- reusables for, I guess, dine-in as the model. Um, there could be some additional, you know, costs and infrastructure that are required for that. So, uh, could you help me understand if there is any question, any line of questioning in the survey that went out to them about the use of reusables?
I want to clarify, we, we haven't surveyed, um, businesses yet. We, we've just sent a letter notifying
Uh, I see.
session and, and inviting them to participate and ask questions.
I see. Okay. I'm like, I was under the impression a survey had gone out. So would it be, would it be possible then to include something with respect to reusables? Just to get a sense of where they are?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, all right. Uh, so I, I didn't have any other questions. Everyone, uh, asked such thorough questions. I, I don't have any additional, uh, at this point. Any other council members have a question? Nope. Okay. So Crystal, any, anyone, uh, wish to make public comment on this item?
Yes, we have one hand at the moment. Kathleen, go forth. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you. Um, I am really delighted to hear that the, the council is, uh, considering adopting this ordinance, and I appreciate the, um, the discussion about it. Um, I just want to say from a personal standpoint, you know, like a lot of people, this past year, we've been eating takeout food probably more than we, we should, but, um, we have been trying really hard to avoid generating more, uh, plastic waste and avoid using singly used plastics, and we pretty quickly found that that limited us to, uh, pretty much the same two or three restaurants. Um, so, uh, to the extent that this ordinance would encourage, uh, or require uh, all of our restaurants to start using compostables, um, that would be wonderful because I'm really getting tired of eating the same three types of food all the time, and this would give us a whole lot more options. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen, and, uh, there are no further hands.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. All right, any additional, uh, discussion from, from council on this? Provide feedback to staff, Councilmember Dugan, and then Councilmember Rack?
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I would just say I'm generally supportive of this, but I definitely want to make sure our outreach to our restaurants is, uh, good and thorough. I don't have a great understanding of if this is a significant burden or not. I, you know, if we do get feedback from restaurants, um, you know, the timing of when we do this is something I would want us to look at, just given it is a tough uh, season for restaurants, and many are still in recovery mode. Um, but directionally, I'm certainly supportive of this ordinance, and I think, uh, the county's done a nice job of, uh, doing the hard lifting on this, and the fact they'll partner with us, um, on enforcement and, and education is, uh, is terrific. So, um, in that sense, I am supportive of moving forward.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rack, and then we'll go to Councilmember Collins, followed by Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, and I can appreciate all the comments and the questions. I thought it was good, thorough. Um, I'm certainly supportive of moving forward with the county ordinance, uh, for this. I guess my only question will come in around, uh, the timing of when we sort of would put that in place because, um, while I'm sort of eager to get it in place as soon as possible, I'm also rec- you know, recognize that some of the restaurants have inventory and other things that they uh, have a cost, a cost associated with that. So I wanted to find a right balance about that, but, um, that's what this, sooner we can do it, the better, but being mindful of, of, of that impact.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, Adam asked my question, and, and so, uh, I won't, I won't re-ask it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to echo, um, what my colleague said. I think that, um, this is an important part of our climate mitigation and adaptation plan, so I'm glad that we're taking action on this this evening. Um, I appreciate that this has been brought forward. I like the education and outreach services that are provided by the county, so I want to thank the county for that. Um, I noted that the county's start date isn't until March, March twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-two, which is um, several months down the road. So I, I would, you know, I'm open to setting that as our target. I think that once we do more outreach and more reaching out to the businesses, that they will probably start transitioning sooner than later. Um, but I, I agree that, um, we do need to give them a grace period to make that transition. So, um, but, uh, looking forward to more business outreach on this as well. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I, and it sounds like we have a general alignment around moving forward with, uh, this, uh, this program. Um, I am really appreciative, especially of the youth who called in this evening, uh, to talk about this. Um, uh, it's, you know, uh, remarkable when I read in the packet, the two-thirds of the litter that's found in the street is related to, uh, takeout food waste. So, um, now is, uh, it's never been a better time to address this, and especially with, um, our limits, uh, when it comes to landfill and anything we can do to reduce that, uh, I think would be great. Um, uh, I think that, um, the county's approach to this is very robust, the enforcement and education piece. Um, I think I really appreciate the infrastructure that's, uh, coming forward along with that. Uh, I agree with Councilmember Rack that we look at the timing around this, uh, because again, from a, you know, if they have existing inventory, um, making sure that they can, uh, uh, take that down, and also to Councilmember Dugan's part, uh, with the potential costs associated with this, my hope is, is that there are solutions for these uh, establishments that are comparable, uh, to the existing, um, uh, foodware. Uh, and then from a timing perspective, um, I think the survey would be curious to help us understand, uh, when would be around the right time. I agree with Vice Mayor McDowell. If we could be aggressive around it, it would be great. I also don't want it to be a hardship, uh, for our, uh, business community. Um, and, um, uh, there was something else I was going to mention, but it slipped my mind. Um, oh, the, the, um, the durable, um, the reusable, um, it, it would be good to get also a read, uh, from some of the restaurants on the, on the reusable, because like, my sense is that's going to be the next wave uh, of, um, of policy changes that we're going to find coming through our, our, uh, broader community. So be curious to see where our business owners are on that. And that survey, so. Um, so with that, um, Greg, can you give us a sense of kind of what, uh, from a kind of shaping this ordinance, what you see as the next steps after gathering community input?
Right, the, the, the next step would be to, for me to review the, the, the model ordinance thoroughly and, uh, provide the council with options on, uh, um, it, the introduction and adoption of the ordinance. I think one of the attractive things about these model ordinances, as we've learned with, uh, the, the reusable plastic bag ordinance is, if the county's, um, enforcement is, is key, and, and when we, when we deviate from the, the county ordinance, it kind of, uh, the model ordinance, it kind of defeats the purpose in some ways because if we're, if we have one particular um, change, we, we, we have to enforce that as part of, uh, through my office. It has to be enforced to the county. It's, the county will not enforce it. It can, um, and we would want to be mindful of potentially, um, having different regulations in other cities that, um, in the area too, as, as well, that sometimes becomes an issue. But basically, we, we would bring forward the model ordinance based on this direction.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, any further comment or discussion on this item before we move on? All right, thank you. I very much appreciated it. All right, so the next item is, I think now it's time for Stephen Machida to talk to us about.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and City Councilmember Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. So I'm going to be, actually be doing a very short presentation on the solid waste, uh, rate reduction program. And looking at some of the other, uh, interviews that we had with other cities in regards to their program, as well as, uh, providing some options that the city may wish to consider for, uh, future discounts. So, next slide please. So, Solid Waste Reduction Program, our program offers a ten percent discount to qualifying low, uh, income households on their recology bill. The average monthly, uh, discount is about two dollars and sixty-one cents per household of the hundred and twenty-two households currently participating. Next please. Uh, so I just wanted to point out that San Carlos was one of the first, uh, cities to actually implement a solid waste reduction program in, back in twenty-fourteen. As I mentioned, um, uh, we did do an inter, uh, survey, and we found Millipar Park just recently, actually probably two years ago, actually modeled their program after what city, uh, City of San Carlos actually had done. And then, as you can see, the other four communities, Mountain View, Recology, San Francisco, City of Santa Clara, and Emeryville have their own, uh, program. But the San Carlos program, we, as I mentioned earlier, we offer ten percent. Millipar Park offers a twenty percent discount. Mountain View, um, has a one-time-only fifty-dollar, uh, credit for the, uh, based on their water sewer and solid waste rates. Recology, San Francisco's twenty-five percent reduction. Santa Clara, uh, three dollars per month, and Emeryville is twelve, uh, twelve and a half percent. And this is all based on, um, PG&E's CARES program. So, next slide. So the reason why this is coming back to you is back in, uh, May twenty-fourth, we actually had brought forth, uh, to council a six percent annual increase for the solid waste, uh, uh, for the solid waste, uh, that we're charging to our community. But the, the council also wants to, uh, request a kind of a review of, uh, the current program and really kind of value whether our current discount is appropriate. Next slide please. So currently, our average program, uh, we, as I mentioned earlier, we have a hundred and twenty-two, um, households participating, and we average about fifteen households a year. These are new, uh, applications. Uh, we advertise, uh, through the recology inserts, which you may have seen, uh, any billing messages on the bills themselves through our social media and on our city website and newsletter. The residents must submit a proof of participation in the PG&E's CARES program, which, uh, from PG&E's standpoint, they offer a twenty percent reduction in electric rates to low-income households. Next slide please. So I'm showing you this table. So this is, as I mentioned, we follow kind of the PG&E CARES, uh, program, but this kind of shows the, uh, income limit uh, for the various numbers of households. And then, uh, just for comparison purposes, we also listed the San Mateo County limit, and this is, uh, thirty percent of the, uh, see, of the area of median income in San Mateo County. And as you can see, both, um, tables match up pretty close. It's not exactly the same, but it's pretty close. But as I mentioned, our program is based on the PG&E CARES, uh, CARES program. We don't really look at any of the income or, nor the number of household, uh, number of people in the house. So we just have, want to make sure that uh, the people who do participate actually have gone through the CARES program, and it is a valid application. So next slide please. So the specifics program, uh, that we have in San Carlos is, so currently, as I mentioned, we have a ten percent discount. And that, um, in the first column there, uh, a participant will normally see about a thirty, thirty-one dollars and twenty-one cents savings, uh, during, actually currently, and that's over the hundred, two, hundred and twenty-two households. And so basically, um, there is about thirty-eight hundred dollar, um, that would be actually, uh, the city council pays for, for the discount. Now, um, looking at for next year, twenty-twenty-two, that's assuming a six percent increase that went into effect on, on August first of this year, as well as another six percent increase on January first. But looking at that, and taking that to count and using ten percent discount, uh, the participants would actually receive a thirty-five, thirty-five dollars and nineteen cents uh, discount, uh, for a total of, uh, uh, for a total program participation be a little over forty-two hundred dollars. And then if we look up more, would have twenty-two percent, or excuse me, twenty percent discount in twenty-twenty-two. As you can see, it almost doubles that to seventy dollars and thirty-eight cents, uh, and the program would cost eighty-five uh, hundred dollars and eighty-seven cents, or excuse me, eighty-five hundred dollars, a little over eighty-five hundred dollars. And then taking it one step further, thirty percent discount, um, the annual household receive a discount of about hundred and five thousand, or excuse me, hundred and five and fifty-six cents. And the program would cost, uh, a little over, almost just slightly under thirteen thousand dollars. So we did this just to kind of give council, just kind of to bear, um, a sense of, uh, the percentage, kind of in comparison to the other um, cities that we had, uh, interviewed. However, just wanted to point out that, you know, these, this type of solid waste program is not really well, um, really well seen throughout most of the Bay Area. Basically, the only, the seven, I think, uh, or six communities that we saw were the ones that we're, we actually could find. And as I mentioned, only two within the, um, SBWA service area. So with that, I'll conclude the presentation, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Stephen. Are there any questions from council for, uh, Councilmember Rack and then Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Stephen, thank you for the presentation and, uh, for the work on that. Um, I, I guess, so one question I had for you. So it sounds like based on how the program runs currently, if we were to sort of expand and, and you know, add the discount, th- there's not extra workload for staff, right? Cause we're just saying, you're in this program, this is the new discount amount, if we were to increase that amount, because they just have to show that they've got, uh, that they're participating in the CARES program. There's no sort of extra operational work for us other than changing the numbers potentially, or the amount of discount.
Yes, that's, that is correct. It's just changing the percentage or, you know, whatever criteria that this council was just use.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have.
Do Councilmember Collins?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Stephen, you already answered one of my questions, and that was, uh, how many other cities are participating, and thank you for that. Um, I'm just curious, is, is there a point at which these discounts have a negative impact on the rest of the ratepayers that don't qualify for a discount, or is it that we've got so few households that there's a negligible impact?
Well, as you can, um, you know, saw on the original table, I mean, the CARES program, I mean, the actual, the amount to household income is, is, is pretty low. So, you know, it, um, um, but basically the program is really being subsidized by a city council, so, um, it's, it's not really impacted because the program is actually, you know, um, taken care of. It's, it's just that it's being subsidized by, uh, you know, the, the general fund.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just want to emphasize that for council and the public. It's not the ratepayers. It, this doesn't come out of the, the other, um, funds we receive from, uh, the ratepayers for garbage. It comes out of the general fund, so it's a separate, separate from any ratepayer, uh, proceeds.
So the, so the hit on the general fund really isn't that big?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, any other questions from council? All right, see none. Uh, Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to comment?
I do not see any hands, no.
All right, uh, further discussion from council? All right, we see Councilmember Dugan, then Rack, and Vice Mayor McDowell.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, I'm supportive of increasing the discount. Um, you know, we just made a, uh, rate increases of six percent of each of the next two years, which is well above inflation. Um, and, you know, I think I argued at the time, this might not have been a great year for, uh, cross-the-board rate increases if we didn't have to do it. And, uh, based on the budget, as I recall, of this fund, that as I recall, um, you know, uh, there's plenty of reserve over a million dollars in this fund. So I, I think this discounting is, is in fact fairly negligible. Um, and I think bringing it in line with the PG&E CARES program, which is set at twenty percent, um, I think that, that would just make sense, a PG&E twenty percent discount and a solid waste twenty percent discount. Um, so that's what I would support.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Uh, sure. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, I, I agree, and I think, actually, after John's comments from the meeting when he raised it, I, I asked about this being able to increase the, the CARES, increase the, the, this part of the program, and so I'm certainly supportive of it. Um, and I would certainly be supportive of, uh, putting it in line with the CARES program to, to increase twenty percent. And I think the cost to the city is negligible, and I think it's, uh, a good step towards helping those.
And I think the cost of the city is negligible and it's a good step towards helping those that need the help.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree. I was going to say the exact same thing as Adam. The cost of the city is really negligible and I'm happy to bump it up to 20%. I think that that's the right thing to do and I'm very supportive of this tonight. Thank you.
All right, I'm in alignment. I'm hearing lots of us in alignment. So heads nodding, I see. So I think with that, Stephen, do you have from us what you need to move forward with this program?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you. All right, so that brings us to our next item, which is, I believe, reports to council, item 8A. And this is, reports to council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Tonight, we are going to receive a report on the process for increasing transparency for housing and commercial development. And it will be presented to us by Lisa Porres, Advanced Planning Manager. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, city council members. Lisa Porres, Planning Manager for the City of San Carlos. I will be giving this presentation on this item tonight, just as the mayor said. Next slide please. So this is an informational item per the council's request. And again, no action will be taken on this item. We want to basically summarize the state's requirements and our own noticing procedures for development applications on new housing and commercial development. So the question is, how do we get the notice out for these types of projects? So tonight, I do want to summarize the public noticing procedures required by the state, those noticing procedures required by our city, which essentially builds on the state's requirements. And then the additional procedures that we do that are not necessarily codified, but that over the years we've done to really advance the notice and get the notice out more in the public. I also want to talk about what we do for long-range or advanced planning activities, such as the housing element update and the Eastside Innovation District Vision Plan project, because there's a whole suite of other notification procedures that we do that aren't really set forward by the state. So we have some creativity and flexibility to determine how we want to approach civic engagement for those long-range planning activities. So we'll hear from the council at the conclusion. We're ready for that. And we also will be ready to discuss the potential implications, should the council desire to do additional noticing beyond the scope of the legal requirements. Next slide. So beginning with the state. So state law really sets the foundation for how notices are distributed amongst the community. And the foundational aspect of the notice is really about when the notice goes out and then who the notice goes out to. And then finally, the contents of that notice. So what I want to start with now is the parameters for when the public notice needs to be sent out. And that is 10 days prior to the public hearing on any development application for a new commercial or new housing development. So that's the when. And then, who it's supposed to go out to, as set forth by the state, is of course, the owner of the subject property, owners of property within 300 feet of the subject site. And if there's more than 1,000 of those individuals, we can do a display ad in the local paper. We do need to publish, publish an ad in the local newspaper regardless. And then we need to post it in at least three public places within the boundaries of the local agency, including one public place in the area affected by the development application proceeding, which is usually the subject site. And then one other thing that the state sets forward in subdivision applications that the owners, excuse me, or is that local agencies that would be expected to provide, you know, services such as water, streets, roads, schools, et cetera, are sent a notification as well. So this is the foundation of when and to whom. And then next slide. The next slide really covers the contents as set forth by the state. So when a notice is developed, we are required to, of course, list the date, the time and location or place of the public hearing. We need to identify the hearing body or officer, so whether that's the zoning administrator, RDRC, planning commissioner, council. We have to provide an explanation of the matter that is to be considered. So all development permits that are being requested. And then we also need to provide a general description of what is being proposed. We can do that in text or diagram. And we, and we provide that, we provide that in the context of the location of where the subject development is proposed at. Next slide. So what the city does is they essentially, what we do here in San Carlos is essentially what is required by state law. We follow, of course, all of the requirements by state law, but we do add a couple of few, a few other noticing requirements that I want to call your attention to in this slide here. So the last two checkmarks is that we also send the notice out to any neighborhood or community group that's filed a written request for such notice for any kind of project that may be in the proximity of where they live or in a certain area of the city that that person or group may be interested in. And if anybody, or if any person or group has requested a notice for a specific project application that comes into place and that they want to follow, and if they're not within those parameters of the notice in terms of who it goes out to, then that person will always get a public, a public notice for any type of decision being made on that project application. We also require that the notice be posted in three public places, which is similar to the state. And then we also require the applicant or owner to post a temporary sign or poster on the site as well. Next slide please. So in terms of the contents of the notice, the City of San Carlos, again, builds on the foundation of what the state requires, but then adds a couple more features to the content of the notice. So one of the things that they do, this is the bottom four bullets here on the screen, is that in our notice, in addition to the state, we also provide the location and time for when the staff report is available to be reviewed by the public. We also provide a statement in the notice that basically lets the public know that any person or authorized agent may appear and be heard by the public hearing body. We also provide a statement on how to submit written comments if someone cannot attend the meeting. And then, one of the things that we do here in the city is that when an item goes before the council, we, we also require that the planning commission recommendation be included in the notice as well. Next slide. So beyond those legal and required legal notification procedures, we also, over the years, have done additional tasks to get the public notice out in the community. And one of the ways that we do that is we utilize the city's e-notify system, which is a collection of emails that the citizens have chosen to sign up for. So if they want to follow all items, any, anything that's going to the planning commission or city council, they can check those boxes and they will always get an email of the upcoming agenda. So that's one of the things that, you know, we, the city, as a city, have chosen to do that's beyond the scope of our legal requirements. We also have recently developed some signage. And the image right here on the left-hand side of the screen is an example of the signage that the city worked with, worked on and prepared to develop. And we basically give these out to applicants to put up at the project site. And you can see here on the image, there's sort of two plexiglass sleeves that, that essentially contain more information about the project, who the contact, what the staff contact is, and a little bit more information about what's being proposed that can otherwise, you know, go on a permanent sign. So this is something that we've done recently and it's tended to work out well. We did have deposit for a short while because of the shelter-in-place safety requirements, but we're looking to start this backup during, for the first meeting in September. We also post information on the actual site. It can be on project, on the fencing, post-adoption or pre-adoption. And this is some, another way that we let the, the public know how they can communicate with the city as far as any information that they may need about the project or someone to call. We also have developed a city webpage whereby we list all of the larger projects that have currently been submitted and currently under review, and also large projects that have recently been approved, because they have a lot of information, kind of like an FAQ checklist, that we like to be able to keep up on the project website after the project has been adopted. So this is just some examples of what we do, kind of beyond the state's legal requirements and beyond our noticing procedures codified in our ordinance. Next slide. And now I just want to shift to some of the other ways that we get the notice out and do our civic engagement outreach for other projects. And where we have more flexibility and creativity is for long-range planning projects, because the state doesn't specify to the city how they do outreach. But there are some requirements for doing outreach, especially for, say, for example, a housing element update that we need to do it. And it's something that the state does look at in the context of housing element updates, but there's not like a specific formula for how we do that. So what I wanted to share with the council this evening is an example of what we do for some of our long-range planning initiatives. And as a council is aware, we have a great opportunity to get the word out through our newsletters. We have both the City of Good Living Newsletter that goes out on a quarterly basis. And then we have the Spotlight Newsletter that goes out anytime we need it to, which is really focused on one specific project or initiative or something, one particular topic that we want to communicate with the citizens about. Whereas the Good Living Newsletter is a combination of many different topics. So for example, and what is shown on this slide here is a Spotlight Newsletter that we issued early on in the year to kick off the Eastside Innovation District Vision Plan. That's a great way to get information out to the community. The other thing that we do is we've developed recently some project webpages. So SanCarlos2040.org for the housing element update, and then also SanCarlosInnovation.org for the Eastside Innovation District Vision Plan are two examples of project webpages that we've developed as a means to let the public know about the projects that we're working on. Next slide. In addition to those, we have utilized postcards as a means for getting the word out to the community. So sometimes we use these postcards and send them out on a citywide basis. And they'll have basic information about the project website, who they can contact, what the subject matter is. And it's usually an invitation to participate in a workshop or through a survey or some sort of means by which we want to hear from the community. And we've done this, again, citywide. And we've also done it for specific areas where, you know, say, for example, the east side, where we're targeting a specific set of stakeholders or group where a lot of the development is occurring, we'll, we focus on a specific area. The other thing that we have in our toolkit is social media, such as Facebook, Twitter and Nextdoor. And we work with our communications team to develop regularly posts, regular postings about the progress of some of the long-range development projects that we're doing. And this is something that we do, for example, several times leading up to a community workshop, or where we're really kind of just doing a push to get more public input, you know, through a survey. So our social media toolkit is a great way to reach out to the community. Next slide. And then, and then, you know, beyond those, we, we really have a robust set of tools in our toolkit to really reach out to the community. And this slide here just really represents a list. It's not, you know, it's not the full list, but it is a list that we've worked on recently to reach out to the community. So we use the Adult Community Center newsletter as a means to get the word out. We publish local government TV ads. We develop email distribution lists that we have from the people that have attended the workshop and signup sheets and signup surveys. And we regularly email those folks about any activities happening with those long-range planning initiatives. We've developed flyers and we provide them at city hall, at the entrances, at the public counter. And we've also taken the initiative where we've seen that we haven't got a lot of public input in a specific, you know, area of the city, where we know those stakeholders are really important in the discussion. And for example, as an example, what staff did is we walked the streets of Terminal Way, Tanglage and Bramston, and hand-delivered flyers to every storefront to let them know that, you know, there's a workshop coming up. There's a stakeholder meeting. We really want them to attend. Because oftentimes, you know, there's a lot of mail that goes out, but really having the face-to-face contact really helps increase the stakeholder participation that we are, we're looking for. So we do that when, when it's necessary and we see that there can definitely be some benefit gained by that. There's the council newsletter. We have our new digital board at the Adult Community Center that we've recently used. And we'll publish display ads, like large display ads in local newspapers. So again, this is just ideas and a list of things that we've done. One thing, for example, that's not on this list is signage at the farmer's market. So we've utilized the, you know, the public and the foot traffic that's, that we have at the farmer's market as a means to posting signage and getting the word out to the community. Next slide. So the next steps are really, is that should the city council direct staff to expand notification efforts beyond those presented here and in the accompanying staff report, staff may need to return with information about potential fiscal impacts associated with the cost of additional noticing and outreach, including any potential adjustments that, that may have on the entitlement process for a development application. This is something that staff would need to look at further, but it really depends on what the council's preference might be. So that concludes staff's presentation. Both Al, Savae and I are available for any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate that. I see council member Rack has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lisa, thanks for the presentation and for all the information on the many ways that the city is doing outreach. A question I had, so just, so I think, because part of my concern in trying to bring this issue up to understand better what we do is, if we, sort of the, if I take the Alexandria project or these larger development projects going on, you know, we, we, I know we do sort of this outreach beforehand and stuff, but once we get to the specific plan of Alexandria wants to build 100-foot tower or they want to do certain things, that only gets sent to the public 10 days before. Is that right?
When, yeah, that is correct. When the project is ready to be heard by the hearing body, and in this case, it would go to the planning commission first and then the city council, then we abide by our regular public noticing procedures. However, I think you be alluding to or referring to what happens before it even gets that far. And one of the things that we do that's not codified in our code, and of course, it's not set forth in state noticing procedures, is public outreach and early civic engagement with the community. So what staff does, for example, for all of the RDRC projects, the single-family projects, that we put together like an outreach packet to make it easier for homeowners and, you know, single, single-family development applicants, to basically send this out to all of the neighbors that are within 150 feet and to have a meeting here and have a conversation. This is something that staff doesn't need to be at. So that's informal, it's not codified, that this is kind of like our internal procedures. And then likewise, when we have a large development application, the conversation between staff and the developer is, is often about, you know, how the developer is going about getting the public input early on in the process. And so this is something that, you know, for very large development applications, almost every developer is having a conversation with staff and the community development director to kind of get a sense on, you know, what works best and what, you know, does staff have any input on how they should go about doing that. But that is something that staff communicates to every development applicant, to let them know that it would behoove them to do this early on in the process and really hear from the community. And then, rather than, you know, waiting until the process was, you know, the, the whole project application is reviewed by staff and then go to the public hearing. project application is reviewed by staff and then go to the public hearing. So this is something that we ask development applicants to do early on is some civic engagement. But again, the, the, the instructions for how they do it is not something that's codified.
Okay. So I appreciate that, Lisa. I guess what I wanted to focus on is I'm not really worried about the one-off residential development because I, I, I think that's a different issue than a million square feet and of office space. And really, once we get to the end of the plan, it's time to be submitted, the residents have 10 days once they see the final sort of plan that's being submitted. To me, it should be further back, and I, because it sounds like there's a lot of things they can be doing, you don't require them to do, and it's in their best interest to do it, but I, I find that the community often gets notified too late that far down the process. So, and I find, we find that from the council standpoint, too, that there are, you know, we don't know enough about things early enough in advance with specificity. And so that's my concern, that we're not, you know, requiring more specificity around these projects earlier on to the community. And that's where sort of I'd love to see us think about how we can do more around that to bring the public in more directly early on and try to smooth that process out better. I guess it's not really a question that sort of was my follow-up to that, but that, that's sort of the only, I guess that's the question I had, but that's, that's my comment to Ron. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I'm, I'm not seeing any additional, oh, I see Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you. I have a quick question, Lisa. Thanks very much for your very comprehensive presentation. I have a question on requiring developers to post images and project contact information on site fencing. Is that requirement also 10 days in advance of the hearing, or is that earlier on in the process? I do think that posting those images really catches our residents' attention as they're driving by. And I'm just wondering if you could provide a little more specificity on that, please.
Certainly, Vice Mayor McDowell. The requirement for posting information on the site, that's a requirement set forth by the state. So the state basically says that there needs to be a notice about what is being proposed, and that is 10 days in advance. So this is not beforehand, but again, this is 10 days in advance. And in the San Carlos municipal code, we mimic, obviously, that state requirement, but we have gone beyond it in some ways by maintaining signage on the site, you know, throughout the course of construction, and especially during construction because there may be a lot of, you know, complaints, if you will, about noise or operations. We want to make sure the public has someone to call. But early on in the process, which I believe is what your question is, we don't require that somebody put a notification on the site at the time the application is submitted. So the answer to that is no, it's usually at the end and 10 days before.
And Al, Lisa, you brought your camera on. Is there a comment you want to make?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to add to that, Madam Mayor, that, for instance, if we, if the developer has some ideas about how a development, how they want the development to look, and let's say it's even before they've submitted an app, a formal application to the city, one of the challenges, if we say really early, you know, in the process, and often they, they have designs or images that they want to share, if, if we say, okay, put those up, you know, at the site early in the process, a lot of times what happens is the project will change throughout the review process. It might change from staff review, it might change from public input or Planning Commission input. So the images and the, the way a project might look could change over time. So if, if you put it up real early in the process, it could give some kind of an expectation to the community that, hey, this has already been approved and this is what it's going to look like. And so that's kind of the challenge that we have is like, well, at what point do you have a developer put up specific images which are very helpful to people as they walk by sites or drive by sites? And typically, we, we kind of wait till the end of the process to kind of get something that's more formulated before the images are posted at the site. So that's just one of the perception issues that kind of comes into play with this particular issue.
Thank you, Al. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, thank you, Lisa, thank you, Al. Very comprehensive overview of all our communication. I know, you know, it's, we do a lot, and I do just want to recognize that, and we go above and beyond some of the requirements. So I know from staff's perspective, I'm sure it can be frustrating from time to time to be, you know, a perception that things haven't been communicated when we do an awful lot of outreach. My question is, is this fairly new on our homepage, the City of San Carlos homepage, this current projects tab? Because I, I've gone looking for this in the past, and I'm actually finding it a lot easier to find now. Is that, is that new or a change?
Lisa, maybe you recall when it was started?
Yeah, I think it really started when we started to see a lot of development activity happening with the construction of Wheeler Plaza and a lot of mixed-use projects going on and around town, around town at the time when we contracted with Dolores Montenegro to really kind of be our primary point of contact with all the construction activity. And a lot of people had questions about, you know, what does this project contain? What is it going to be? What's, what, you know, what, you know, how tall is it? What is this project about? So we started to kind of put together a webpage as a means to kind of provide that communication to the public, and it has been on the website ever since, except I think it might have been recently moved around because my recollection with some other staff is it was, I don't know if it was because there was so much content on it, but there was a couple of technical issues with it, some starts and stops, and I think it might have been resolved and maybe potentially relocated on the webpage. But if it's easier to find, then, then we're, we're certainly pleased to hear that because that's what we, we definitely want it to be easier to find and available and accessible to the public.
Terrific. I appreciate that, and I do believe it is much easier to find now. So I, I personally think having all this on the website is very important because people kind of choose when they go looking for this information. So having it live somewhere, I think, is very important. I do just want to understand, so there's basically then, once you click on that, there's two main areas, development projects, capital improvement. So I'm assuming, you know, Planning runs the development project tab and Public Works does the capital improvement tab. Is that, I'm sure that's the case?
Yes.
And then, and I'm just curious, maybe just on the planning side, like, who owns that? Is that something you guys, you know, look at frequently? Is it, you know, and I kind of see a, a status bar on each project, you know, I've noticed a couple of them are kind of out of date, you know, not quite tracking. Like, who kind of owns that? And, you know, how much of, of effort is that to maintain?
It's probably a quarterly basis that we look at it, and, you know, we're constantly putting out new projects on there. We try, you know, for instance, if there's a milestone event, we try and make those changes. We have staff in our department that, it's typically administrative staff that works with the planners. So we feed the information to administrative staff and they get updated. But, but you're right, sometimes things get a little stale, particularly if a project has been approved for a while, you know, and sometimes, you know, new information needs to get put in there or something needs to get taken down. So we spend a fair amount of time monitoring these webpages pretty regularly, but it's a fair amount of work.
Yeah, fair enough.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a lot to say. I want to thank Lisa for a very thorough presentation, and it just reminds me once again how much outreach we really do in this town that is miles down the road or miles of improvement over when I first joined the council. We didn't have informed San Carlos, and we barely had E notify. I think we just do a tremendous amount of outreach, and I'm glad that, that Al Svei brought up the point about giving too much information too early. Some of these projects change because the developer changes the project due to staff feedback, maybe public feedback. And I, and so I, I think we can kind of overdo it at some point. So one of the things I, that has happened, and I think it's good, but I believe that it's been on primarily a voluntary basis, is for developers to do their own outreach to the public. I think VIV has done that. I think that the Alexandria people did it. The people who built the Marriott Residence End did it. And those, those outreaches by the developer to the public are, to me, are really valuable because they get to interact directly with the people whose project they're going to affect. And I think we ought to encourage that more, but we really need to put it more on the developer to do, to help us do that outreach. That, to me, is going to go a long way. The, the only other thing I wanted to bring up was I noticed that we give in residential projects, we require 150-foot notice. When you think about it, that's only three houses. I mean, if, if somebody five houses away from me has a project going on, I'm not required to be noticed. So I wonder whether or not we ought to look at that notice, that noticing of 150 feet and maybe have a discussion about increasing it to some, something a little bit, a little bit broader. Anyway, those are my comments, and again, thank you, Lisa and Al, for your, your comments and presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Appreciate it. These are all really great questions and inquiry, and I, when I was reading through the packet, I was just so impressed, Lisa, with the extensiveness with which the staff reaches out to the community, not only in terms of its breadth, but also the, just the different modalities. And we see in our council, the community survey that's done annually, how, you know, very different people like to receive information, and that's a lot to manage for any size team. And particularly, you know, it's mighty, for sure. I really appreciate Councilmember Collins, what you're bringing to light and building on Al's perspective around the fact that these projects do change quite a bit. And the, the, you know, depending upon, you know, the size of the project, right, there's, you know, a number of different processes that will take into consideration the impacts of that particular project. And I would agree that the developers have a role to play in this, and, you know, from what I've heard from the community members, some developers execute that in a way that brings the community along and they feel heard, and others aren't quite as, I don't get the same feedback, in other words. So it would be, you know, great if our developers could really embrace this idea of how involved the, the community here in San Carlos is and wants to be a part of that particular process. So I think, you know, I, I'm very, very much appreciative of this education and kind of the breadth of outreach that's done. And, you know, I think the only thing that I would see that we may have a potential gap on would be, maybe to your point, Councilmember Collins, extending the circumference from 150 to 300 for residential projects. But I'm, the other thing, too, is that vision planning process has just been extraordinary, so we'll hear more about that. I know you touched on that today, Lisa, but I think it's fair to say that thousands of data points have been collected from the broader community and input into that, and I'm sure that there's going to be more to come for council on that. Is that correct? Vision planning, the, the feedback from the community, we'll have a discussion about that in due time.
Madam Mayor, I didn't realize that was a question to say.
Yes. Yeah, I kind of rambled and then I threw it in there.
That's fine. We have a study session with the Planning Commission. It's actually a joint study session with the Planning Commission and Transportation and Circulation Commission this coming Wednesday, August the 25th, starting at 7:00 PM. And then we will move on to the council for a special meeting study session on September the 8th. And thereafter that, we will bring the item before the Planning Commission for a formal public hearing on September the 20th, and then we'll go to council subsequently after that as a formal item before the council. But the next two opportunities, there's no decision, they are study sessions.
And then my understanding, too, is of the workshops that have been held to date, they're, they're all recorded and anybody can access those at 24/7 on the respective websites for housing element update as well as vision plan, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So, all right. Adam, I see that you have your hand up. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one question and then one comment. So, and just following up, I'm just glad to see the website and things up and that John pointed that out. Can you let me know, and it could be offline, too, I just want to understand the criteria of how projects make it onto the website, sort of what the, if there's a criteria around it, who's, I noticed there's some stuff on there, but like we approved that MBC building a couple weeks ago or right before we went, or that was approved by Planning, and I don't see it up there. So I just was more just curious of how things get up there or don't get up there with the processes.
I'll start, and then Al can, can add anything he may like, but this is something that staff talked about early on in the process because there's so many development applications that are submitted across the counter on a regular basis, and of course, the bulk of them are single-family. So it was very easy for us to sort of weed those ones out and then really put our attention towards projects that are in, you know, key locations, such as the downtown, even if it's a nine, nine-unit, you know, mixed-use project, you know, relatively small or somewhat small, we still wanted to put it on the project website because of its location or because of its particular size. So not all new development is on the project website. So, excuse me. So for example, the, the MBC project, I don't know that we specifically said that we would not put it up, but these, these, these kinds of decisions really get made sometimes on a case-by-case basis, depending upon, you know, the specific or unique characteristics about what's being proposed. Certainly something like Alexander is very easy to say, yes, this needs to go on the project website, or a project proposal like VIV along Alan Midillis' poll list, that one will go on the project website. But not every new development application will go on. Excuse me. I have a little pickle in my throat.
If I could add to that, Lisa, that 1030 Britton, the MBC project, to my recollection, is on the website, but it may have been difficult to find, and I think that was Councilmember Dugan mentioned that, you know, maybe it's easier now, but, you know, maybe it was difficult to find that particular project, but I'm pretty sure it's on there. I think I've seen it. So it just may have been really tough to find it. We, we can look at that. And, and I think finally, one of the things that city staff has been talking about is coming up with a, an electronic map for the community so that we could just have all the projects on one electronic map with icons that you can just kind of press on and then get all the information for each project. So that's kind of the next level of interaction for the community. We, we call these things like geographic information maps and systems, and we're, so we're talking about doing that with our map operator, and I think that we can do that, and it's going to take some work. But I think that's sort of the next evolution of making these projects easy to access just by looking at a map and then pushing a button where you think it is or where you saw it when you drove by or something like that. So that's the, the evolution that we're looking at at this point.
Okay. That sounds great. I, I did see the project is, is up there, but it is the old project, the old version of the project that was requesting a development agreement. So the updated version is not up there. And then just, I just, I wanted to just make one comment that I appreciate Ron's thoughts on the residential development. I think that's a good idea to expand to 300 feet, and I would maybe throw out that for some of the larger projects that we have in our community over a certain size, that we maybe look at expanding the notification requirements for that 10-day period. And I would maybe throw out that for some of the larger projects that we have in our community over a certain size, that we maybe look at expanding the notification requirements for that 10-day period. So if you've got something like an Alexandria or the VIV project, that it, we go beyond the 300 feet. And I'm assuming that a company like Alexandria would have, would not be really negatively financially impacted if they sent the notification out to a broader audience. So I'd be interested in seeing if that would be possible to add as well. Thank you.
All right. Well, Vice Mayor McDowell and Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for indulging me with the second question as well. So I'm poking around on the website, too, and I frequently look at it. And I see that Alexandria and their plans are up there, and VIV has plans up there, Vistal Del Grande is up there. None of those have, you know, they haven't gone through the long process yet. They're still working their way through the process. And so in my mind, in effect, we are kind of notifying the community that these projects are out there. It's on the website. They can look at the plans. Obviously, the plans can change significantly, but we are posting it. So again, I'm a little, I guess I'm confused on like, okay, something goes on the website and is notified to the community, but yet we don't want to require them to put a poster up on fencing or on the land. And I don't really see what the difference between those two things are, except that it's another way to kind of catch the attention of our community. Do you have, so I guess I'm asking for clarification on how something makes the website when it could still change?
I think that it's kind of the way that people interact with information and the perceptions that people have. If you're on a webpage, you can scroll around and kind of dive into the details of, hey, this project hasn't been considered yet, these are just preliminary plans. And I suppose you can put that on a big poster or some kind of a wrap that you put at the site. But if you're just kind of someone driving by or walking by, to have all that detail at the site, it's just more challenging. And so if you're walking by a site, you might go home mad because you think, hey, the city approved this and I didn't know about it. But if you're on the webpage, you would see, yeah, it's just, you know, it's a proposal. So that, it's more of kind of an art than a science, I guess. And so that's how I would respond to that.
Thank you, Al. Councilmember Dugan, then I see we have a public comment, so maybe we could move to public comment after this.
Yes, Madam Mayor. And in fact, I only have comments, so maybe we should just move to public comment and then pick up comments on the other side.
Well, this is kind of an open discussion because it's just, it's a report to council, so it's not, we're not taking action tonight.
Okay. Yeah, my commentary would just be, I appreciate everyone's comments. I would support extending the residential app to the 300 feet as discussed. And then I would just, I would like us, I would like to see us lean into our website. I think everyone finds that a very useful resource. I think we do a lot of very robust outreach in all those different ways. And to the point made earlier, plans change, things change, and that's exactly what a website's really good at, is it can stay updated. And I think it'd be worth an investment by the city to even have it, a communications consultant help us think through formally how best to structure that. It occurs to me it'd be nice if the projects were sorted so that when you, instead of getting confronted with a list of 20 or 30 projects, which is great, it's great being able to go in and having that oriented on a map, it'd be great. But maybe it should be sorted by, this is going to be discussed by council next week or in the next month or next quarter, just so someone can get oriented, not just geographically, but also kind of where a project is in the process before they actually click into each project. And then I just think consistency would be important, and I know this is work, but it is, I really think this is a principal point of keeping that. You know, I know whenever I'm trying to figure out what's going on with a project, this is where I go. And I'm sure plenty of other people do that. That's a popular way to interact with the world now. And by consistency, I guess what I would like to see is some projects have documents that are clickable and you can go into the EIR or something like that. And I would just like to see that fairly comprehensive, where most projects have the detail that you can click into if you're interested. So that's my input.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Appreciate it. All right, Crystal, if we can go to public comment.
Okay. Debbie, see your hand up if you want to go ahead and unmute.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. And I would just like to say I'm a resident of San Carlos, and I appreciate the recommendations by Councilmember Rack to give more than 10 days' notice on these projects. Sometimes the agenda packets are 400 to 500 pages long. And so if you want to take the time to go through it and respond, it would be so nice to have a little more time. So thank you, Councilmember Rack, for that. Also, thank you, Councilmember Collins, for the suggestion for the 300-foot notification rule. We have a group of neighbors in our area, and we try to email each other when someone gets a RDRC, for example, so that people that are five or six houses down that could be impacted have an opportunity to weigh in. So thank you for that. And thank you also Vice Mayor McDowell for suggesting onsite pictures and things like that. You can always resolve the problems mentioned by Mr. Savae by having a website that they can go to, they can have a comment on that to say, these are preliminary plans, subject to change, something like that. So that would be helpful. And with regard to public feedback, when we go to Planning Commission meetings or other commission meetings, it sounds as if, or sometimes people perceive as if, you're only allowing public comment because the state or city requires you to do so. However, when we provide the comment, it seems like they're seldom followed, honestly. And if you look at a recent example of Alexandria, it had an EIR scoping. What do you want to see in the EIR? So we prepared a detailed list of can you add these specific things with hydrology, other things? And they declined to do it. So why even have a meeting if they're going to stay with what they had? And further proof of that is at Planning Commission meetings in particular, you'll already have the resolution typed up about what you're going to approve. For example, 777 Industrial, they wanted variances, they wanted various things. All that was approved in advance. So when that's listed up in the agenda packet as this is how it's going to be, you can see why people don't believe that their input is seriously considered because almost no changes are ever made. But on the other hand, you are very transparent in getting the word out, and we greatly appreciate your efforts in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, for your comments. Very much appreciated. All right. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is agenda setting. And there was a proposal to consider agendizing an item to discuss a disclosure requirement for developers and developments when they are using paid consultants to lobby the Planning Staff Commission and City Council.
That is my item, Madam Mayor. I would just, I wanted, I felt sort of the need for looking at increased transparency. And I thought, I was sent an article that it's all about the, you know, there was, for example, in San Jose, a project, it was in the Mercury News, excuse me, a project that was approved for 319 units, that 80 of the letters that came in were for the developer asking to support the project. And I don't know that that was disclosed. And I was at a planning, I listened in on one of the Planning Commission meetings, and I know that someone who is a paid consultant for that developer came on and talked about how they were a resident and supporting the project. And I just feel like the developer should disclose in our planning documents when they come up, whether they have paid consultants who are lobbying us, lobbying the Planning Commission, lobbying staff, so that the public knows that and is aware of it, and we're aware of it going into certain, into the meetings when we're asking for approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Adam?
I'll just say that I support bringing this back to council. I think anything that increases transparency is a good thing.
Yeah, I'll just chime in. I agree, I wouldn't mind seeing this back. If a paid consultant is speaking before one of our commissions or council, we should understand what their relationship is to the project.
All right, thank you. Greg Rubens, do you have a comment on this? I thought that you were doing some research on whether this was even viable within a council's domain.
Yeah, I took a look. There are several cities in California and in the Bay Area that have some regulation of what they've described as lobbyists. So I'd like to study the issue a little bit, just to make sure I'm completely understanding it. Most of the ordinances I've read have a, really talk about registering people, and then they have to periodically re-report to the city about what developers are paying them as a lobbyist, and then you have to define what a lobbyist means. So it might be something, I mean, it's something I'll look at to report back to you when it comes back, just to see what the extent of our authority is to do this and what's practical and what would inform the public in a situation like that. And then about, you know, one of the issues I'm concerned about is just balancing First Amendment issues, and that's always the issue that we come across when we're talking about speech and people speaking in public meetings.
Yeah. So Greg, I think, from my perspective, I think my concern with this is around making sure that we don't have government overreach on this. And we also just know generally speaking in our community right now at micro level as well as nationally, we have challenges, right, with transparency around social media and what is really driving the narrative that's coming forward. So I think it's, you know, the problem is large. You know, always I wonder about, where is this person coming from and what's the economic interest, right? The challenge, though, is what to do about it. So if you could provide us some guidance in terms of what the guardrails are, I think that would be a good conversation to start with.
There are many, there are many issues. It's a pretty complicated area, but we'll, I mean, it'll probably come back to you, I imagine. I'll talk with Jeff about what the best approach is, but maybe it'd come back as a study session just about how different cities are handling the subject matter of the issue that's been brought up. It's complicated enough that I don't want to just create an ordinance to bring to you. I think it'd be good to hear more input from the council.
Yeah, that would be appreciated from my perspective. I want to just make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is on something like this. It's a sensitive issue, for sure. I see, Crystal, we have a member of the public with their hand up. Debbie is interested in speaking, it looks like.
Okay, yes, Debbie, we can unmute. There you go.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack, for bringing this to everyone's attention. And to all members of the council, I did send each of you an individual email citing the article that Councilmember Rack mentioned. And it was in Newark, and they received, the city council received about 210 emails in support of a project at New Park Mall. And the investigative reporters at the Mercury News found that 80 of the emails appeared to be for people who worked for the developer. So they were actually employees of the developer. And in further examination, they found that almost all of the 200 and something emails were very similar in wording. So it may be difficult to have the public honestly disclose if they have a financial interest in the development, if they're employed by the developer, or if they have family members that are. But it would be helpful for planning and city council to know who's supporting projects and are they residents of San Carlos, or are they true stakeholders who will be affected, or are they activists? So to the extent that you could fashion something that would require developers to disclose that it's their employees or their lobbyists or interested parties that are writing in support of their projects, that would make regular San Carlos residents or renters or business owners feel as though you know who's asking for support. So thank you for considering that. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item is item 11B, consider agendizing an item to discuss Assembly Bill AB 1401 Residential and Commercial Development Remodeling, Renovations and Additions Parking
So, Madam, this is mine, too. And I actually don't know that we need to agendize this because of the timing. I just was raising it because it's an issue that we looked at with CCAG. And we are, through CCAG, I believe, working with, hopefully with the Assembly and the Senate to try to increase the, put a higher threshold for accounting that would be required to do this. And it would require, it would reduce the parking requirements for developers, which is obviously for us a good negotiating, a good piece of leverage for us when we're talking about getting affordable housing and other projects. So I don't think there's a need for an action item at this point on that. I would withdraw that request just to, but let you know that we are through CCAG working on behalf of the cities and the county for this.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Rack, for bringing that to our attention. All right, are there any other members of council who wish to forward a potential future agenda item for consideration? Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, a few years ago, I suggested that we consider employee bonuses for the work that our staff has done over the last few years. I was not successful in that. But given that a neighboring city has done just that, and given the fact that we just survived and are still surviving, really, and going through a pandemic in which our employees have worked many, many hours, I would like us to agendize a discussion on potential one-time employee bonuses. I don't know if that's something that you want to put on, I mean, we could put it on for discussion next time, or we can consider it later, but I was hoping that we might have that discussion in the future.
Councilmember Collins, I appreciate that. I think it might be worthwhile discussing at a future time. I also recognize extraordinary hardship that our staff had to work through. And again, they came through with flying colors, as evidenced by the community service. So I appreciate your bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dugan, I see you took your microphone.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd be comfortable taking a look at this. I'd obviously would like the city manager's input and opinions on this, but we can take a look at this.
All right. Jeff?
I think in talking to Councilmember Collins about this earlier, I think this arose because he had read a news article that the city of San Mateo recently did something to this effect for their employees. I think it was a fixed amount. I don't remember exactly what it was, maybe $2,000 payment, I think, across the board to employees, I think in recognition for the work they did during COVID. So if you're interested in us taking, I haven't looked at what San Mateo had done in any detail. I was aware that they had had an item on their agenda to that effect that had passed. Would be happy to take a look at that in detail and present it to you at a later date.
Thank you. It sounds like there's three in favor, Jeff, so it can move forward.
Okay, we'll take a look and figure out what they did or if there's anything else that's been done that we're not aware of and bring it back to you.
All right, thank you. All right, and Crystal, is there any members of the public who wish to make a comment?
Yes, we do have one hand. Debbie, if you can go ahead and unmute.
Thank you. This is my last comment. I just wanted to say, I think there's many members of the community that would strongly support staff bonuses. I, for one, send emails and get rapid responses, whether it's from Public Works or from Lisa Porras, Lisa Costa-Sanders, or other departments. whether it's from Public Works or from Lisa Porras, Lisa Costa-Sanders, or other departments. And we have all benefited greatly from the hard work by staff. And we think just broadly that San Carlos has some of the best staff members in the whole county. So I just wanted to voice my support for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. All right. Well, if there are no additional comments or proposed agenda items, then I think we are officially adjourned for the evening.
Good night, everybody.
Okay, thank you, everyone.